Sorry.
And just as a reminder, when everyone goes to talk, make sure you do have that green light on the bottom and make sure it's pulled as close as possible. I will try to use my deeper voice today.
Good afternoon. This is the October 24th, 2022 meeting of the Planning Commission. I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Paul Saccolato.
Here.
Lisa Kelly Thorne.
Here.
Sherman Johnson.
Here.
Brad Gamblin. Joseph Como.
Here.
Harvey Goldberg.
Here.
Donna Peterman.
Here.
Okay, if we will all stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next meeting will be November 28th, 2022 at this location. And at this time, if there's anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission on any topic other than the quasi judicial portion of the meeting, which there will be an opportunity to do that, please come forward to the podium, state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Yes, sir. Podium. And please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Anthony Scott. I'm the property owner, actually, right next door, 817.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. My name's Anthony Scott. I own the property immediately next door to the property in question, at 817 West Marion Avenue. So, my question was basically, what kind of properties are intended to be built?
Excuse me, is this part of the quasi judicial, there'll be an opportunity at that time? No, this is other topics, other than the quasi judicial.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right.
Thank you. You'll have another time, and then you'll have to be sworn in to speak. All right, anyone speaking on any other matter, other than the quasi judicial hearing topic? Okay, seeing none. Maybe at this time, Sarah, let's swear in anybody who thinks they want to speak at the quasi judicial hearing, since you're here.
All right.
All right, let's do that. So if you, you know, please stand, take your oath.
Anyone intending to offer testimony in today's proceedings, please stand and raise your right hand, if you even just think you might, it's better to go ahead and be sworn now. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings? When you are ready to speak, please come to the public podium, state your name, and indicate that you have been sworn.
And we will remind you when we get to that portion of the meeting. Okay, next, approval of the minutes, do I have a, does anyone have any comments?
I have, I have comments.
Okay.
Last, at the last meeting, when we had the vote to have the comments published or presented by the tent, you said they were all in favor, I did not say aye, you didn't ask for opposed, so it wasn't, it wasn't unanimous, just, I thought it would be better to hold off due to the weather conditions. Just as a point of process.
I have one comment.
Yes.
On page five of our package, which is, I think, page two of the, of page, yeah, page two of the minutes, under item 3B, it says that I moved to find it consistent with a comprehensive plan, and then I seconded it. I know I can move it, and I know I can second it, but I don't think I can do both.
No, we'll go back and review the minutes to see who was the one that moved and who seconded.
Okay, so fix it so that the right one is in the right box.
Yes.
Okay, so Sarah, do we just wait till the next minute to approve them, or?
Or you can do move as approved, move to approve as amended with that correction, and we'll bring it back next time for signature.
And the unanimous vote, it wasn't unanimous.
We can note that as well in the comments for this meeting.
Okay.
Move to the minutes be approved?
As amended.
As amended, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are going to change the order of this meeting, so we're going to start with, and that's due to certain schedule issues, so we're going to start with the Planning Commission bylaws.
All right, so we haven't made any changes to our presentation at this time. The purpose of today's discussion is to review the comments that have been provided to us, and if the commission desires to have commission members vote to recommend the changes that were noted in the comments we received. Would we like to take them one by one? Did everyone have a chance to review the comments?
Just a question of process, and this is something I talked about last time. Again, we have.
Joe, they can't hear.
Yep, I've got, and again, we have two copies of the bylaws. One is the existing copy of the bylaws as they exist today. Again, not dated or indicating that it is the current edition. We also then have your annotated where you've gone through and done the line changes, and we have another copy of the bylaws, also without date or any indication that it's a revision or anything else. When making our comments, I see that we were sort of like, okay, when citing a page and number for comment, which edition are we comparing against? And so when I go back and compare, we're still comparing to the original currently existing bylaws by page and number. So it's still just a little bit confusing, this is set up. So as we come back again, we're going to need a clearly legible copy that says, okay, as of this date, whatever this date, this is the second revision to the current existing bylaws as proposed, amended by on such and such a date. So at least we know what copy or what timeframe we're working from. So we don't keep going, okay, I say paragraph one, section one, is that paragraph one, section one of this edition? There is a paragraph one, section one of this edition? You know, we ought to have a single source document that we can all reference. And that has nothing to do with content, but just process. Thank you.
All right, so the first comment that we received was Lisa Kelly Thorne, and what she had noted was that, including, if asked by council for the part that was about the capital budgeting process and the duties, let me scroll down there. In the proposed bylaws, it's duty C. Can everyone view that on the screen, or is that somewhat hard to see?
Pretty small.
Pretty small. Would you like me to read that duty?
But Sarah, we've never done that.
I know.
The only reason I put if asked is, say, for example, we found as a group during different reviews of plan developments, a need for additional parking or something, some other community benefit, that we would present that as being knowledgeable of what is needed by the community, not necessarily as an ongoing thing, but if asked, that we should be able to present capital projects that we think would benefit the community. That was my comment on that. But my other comment, which earlier, was we've reviewed these in their entirety, and so I'm not really sure why we're going back to reviewing them again. I mean, we went through all of these prior to the marketplace review. You know, it's kind of disappointing because it feels like we're changing the rules to change the amount of people we have in a quorum. And so that's my general concern. Because we already went through these as a group, we came up with one outstanding item, which was the, which was the capital, and now we're going back. I don't understand why.
And I would respectfully disagree, in the prior discussion that we had, I don't know or believe or feel in my, in my mind that we came to any hard and fast conclusions about, about the bylaws. And since the discussion was at the prior meeting, to provide the city clerk's office with any of our proposed recommendations for change, it was still alive and an active issue and a need. I don't think we're rehashing anything, we had some discussions, we didn't come to any conclusions, as far as I was concerned.
Well, we went through and redlined the entire document.
Excuse me, I wasn't quite finished. We did go through a number of items, however, there was some that we needed to provide additional information on, not only those that we felt may need to be reexamined, but the reasons behind, the rationale behind any potential changes or the implications of those, which I feel that were subsequently provided to the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Joe.
Okay, so going back to the original presentation by the clerk, city clerk's office, on the proposed changes to the bylaws, yes, there was some discussion, but then it was going to be, then it was, we'll get back to you with. And there was, it was always intended to be more discussion, because that was not a final, that was just a one time. So by the time they got back to us with what was going to be a further in-depth discussion, we had the marketplace meeting, and in that meeting, we never actually got to a discussion of the bylaws as an agenda item in that, we ended up being adjourned before there was adequate discussion, and the bylaws were continued to the next meeting. The next meeting was our last meeting, where we started into it again, and I started into a line-by-line comment, and it was obvious that it was going to go too long, so again, said, okay, so board members, come back with your comments to staff prior to the 14th, and we will try to include them as agenda items in this meeting. So this is really the first time we've had an opportunity to do an in-depth review of the bylaws in, in toto, as a body where we've all had an opportunity to look at proposed changes from either ourselves or other members. So this, to me, is really the first, and I don't see this as a final answer, I don't see necessarily there'd be 100% resolution to date. This is, is, will probably take one and maybe two more meetings before we come to a final thing, because after, after looking at these, I found some things that I agreed with that other people have made, that I, you know, can change my comments and stuff on, so I still think there's room for changing some of these things, and that they've never been completely resolved.
Other comments?
Well, I think since the last meeting, we've had a few events that have impacted the city, that have prevented a lot of people from fully focusing on this issue. Okay, I know I haven't had the time to focus on this issue, I've spent most of my time trying to figure out who's going to fix my house. So I think in light of that, and that includes the staff, I imagine the staff has been pretty busy doing other things than worrying about the bylaws. In any event, at the last meeting, I made a motion, and it was approved, to postpone discussion until people got a chance to put comments in within 10 days. And we had a hurricane, pretty nasty one, as a matter of fact, and I think a lot of the people on this board, as well as other people, have had to cope with that. I don't think we're prepared to deal with this issue right now, in view of what's happened since the last meeting. I mean, the city is in disarray, the place is a mess, and we're here counting angels on the head of a pin. I would suggest that we put this one off, put the bylaws off, until we get a better picture, and people have a better chance to get their life back in order, to focus on this issue. I don't think this is a priority with regard to this board right now.
Are you making a motion, Paul?
Oh, I'd like to have some discussion first, before there's any motion. But I would certainly say that the level of engagement that is necessary for these bylaws, and the other thing I would want to point out, is that it isn't just the bylaws for this commission that are at issue, it's the bylaws for all of the boards that are currently being updated. And we can't take this board and make it a totally separate kind of set of rules for this board, as compared to the other boards that the city has to manage. I mean, we want to do a five-member board, but all the other boards are seven members, so we're going to create a different kind of board. So I think we need to have a little more background as to what goals are trying to be achieved by the rewrite of these, these bylaws. Is it, do you want to make all of the boards more or less consistent, except for the duties that they are engaged in, and their responsibilities? If that's the case, then we need to settle on, on the fact that if all the boards are going to be seven-member boards, then all the boards are going to be seven-member boards.
I would note currently, there is variation between the number of members on different boards. Not all are seven, some are five.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. So I didn't know that, the boards I've sat on have been seven, you know, so.
The majority are seven.
Personally, I would be in favor of five members, that's what the city council is, and I also think it takes some burden off of the city to recruit qualified members if we get down to a manageable number, because clearly that has been a challenge, and I think it's something the city council is aware of and thinking about. But I don't disagree with you that if people feel that they need more time for input, we have comments that were included, but if we feel that if we wait another meeting or so, there will be more comments, then I would be supportive of that, but just recognize, this is my last meeting, so, so whatever, in that regard. But anyway, this is an important thing, and I don't think you want to rush it. But again, I'm open to whatever people want to do to proceed. Harvey?
How much time, I'm prepared to tell you, but that's, that's okay, because I made the time to do this, but everybody had different circumstances, so how much time would the commission members, additional time, commission members need to provide input and comment to the city court?
Do we have the next meeting's agenda?
No.
Okay, I didn't know. Yeah, previously, I thought it was something, some fish, that's a pretty big agenda, so it might not be appropriate to add it to that agenda, if that's the case.
Staff has indicated that will be coming in November. Fisherman's Village will be presented in November.
I don't think we can necessarily have to, we have to look at this sort of independently, it's just like, okay, this has now been several months that we've been putting this off. With Harvey, you know, I've got, I'm ready today, but I do see the value in pushing it off, or not pushing it off, but giving time for more comment. I don't think we necessarily have to take into account what other boards and commissions do, and, you know, I have sent more than one email to city staff and to council members expressing my opinions on this, and as the chair has mentioned, city council has, in their discussions, mentioned the idea of reducing board members or consolidating boards, and I believe at the last city council meeting, there were 19 vacancies sitting there. You know, in the years I've attended city council, there've been valiant efforts to increase citizen participation through boards and commissions, not always very successful. And, and, you know, the city camp, city council manages to operate just fine with five members and a quorum of three. You know, any of the other boards and commissions could easily operate with five members and a quorum of three. When I look at the amount of paper, you know, just this week, just for this board, that the staff has to generate for us to all have hard copies, I mean, we could cut that in half on a monthly basis across the board, cut their administrative workload, cut the administrative costs, find a whole lot more efficient way of doing it, and not necessarily reduce citizen participation, you know, in the meantime. Ideally, you know, in a more open democracy, you'd have a lot more participation. I think we've been a little frustrated in our efforts to get people to volunteer, because unfortunately, or fortunately, I keep seeing a lot of these same faces at the same meetings.
I have a question on that.
Can I finish, please? Okay, thank you. So anyhow, so I feel very strong both ways, in the words of Billy Martin, but we can delay it, but I don't want to see it delayed indefinitely. If we want to delay it, I want to delay it to a date certain, and not tie it to whether or not there's any other large or potentially contentious agenda items on the agenda. If we want to delay it for 30 days or so to the next meeting, that's fine, but do it to a date certain, and not make it dependent upon what else is on the agenda. And for everyone to be ready to discuss it at that time, and not hear another movement for continuation. Thank you.
I have a question on how positions are posted or communicated to the public. I mean, I applied for the building board because I was asked by a council member, not because I saw it posted somewhere, so I'm not sure what the process is, so if we have a shortage of people, I've been approached by several people asking me what the process is, so that might be part of the problem.
I think the clerk's office does a very good job of trying to publicize the openings they advertise, it's very prominent on all of the city's communications, on their website, in the city manager's communications, in the council members' communications, so I'm, I'm a little troubled by trying to blame the communications method for why we don't have the response that we might want to have. And to Joe's point, I think one thing we could do, if people are supportive of recommending a lesser number of board members, I think we could have a motion to that effect, we could vote on that, and then also, for the next time that you guys deliberate, maybe the clerk could make the adjustments to the drafts that Joe has brought up several times, so that we know what draft we're working with, and at least move that forward, so we get the consistency on the drafts and the dates, and if people feel that we are in a position to vote on the number that we'd like to recommend of representatives on this group, I mean, we can make a motion to that effect and include it in our next meeting. Brett?
It's pretty evident that we are not ready today, anyway, to look at it. I think that's one thing we can agree on. However, I also agree that this should not drag on forever, but it may need a bit more input in the context of the other commissions and are, that are involved, because we really don't, and it's been mentioned here before, we really don't want to stand alone with something that may not meet with the consensus of acceptance that we would like to see happen. That's, so I would say, not today, but probably not something that's going to go on for three months, four months, five months, it should be resolved, and we should know just what we're doing very shortly.
Joe.
Okay, and one other means, and I didn't put it down as a prerequisite, or something that ought to be required for board membership, I found out about it when I went to the Citizens Academy, and I find that the people who go through the Punta Gorda Citizens Academy tend to have a little bit better understanding of the functioning of city government, and what all of these purposes do, and it was, is through the Citizens Academy that I actually ended up volunteering the first time. But along these lines, I don't mind stepping out and being an example, Brad, and I think the checks and balances in this is that we still remain an advisory board. Our decision is not final, our decision will still go to the city council, and the city council will make the decision as to whether or not they want this to be a five-member board, a seven-member board, or a nine-member board. So we are offering them our advice, our judgment on what we have seen as a working body, and what we think will work. They obviously will have their opinion, and come back to us with what they see, and we will live with whatever their decision is. But, you know, I don't have any problem with stepping out and saying, this is what we want, this is why we think it's good, and, and use it as a model for other boards and commissions on a citywide basis, because, you know, it, you can look at, all you need to do is look at the agenda or the minutes from any city council meeting, and look at the vacancies out there, and realize they're not filling, you know, and I don't see things necessarily getting better. So anyhow, thanks.
Karen Smith, City Clerk, for the record? I just want to make a couple of comments on some of the things that I've heard. Reducing the board to five members, and you're, and the comparison is made to city council. City council represents five districts in each person, although they do represent the entire city, they represent a small portion of the population, best divided into equal districts, equal number of population by district. That could change, if we continue to grow, we could have six council members, and then should the planning commission be six coun, be six commissioners? I don't think you should be comparing yourself to city council in that regard. The important thing to consider, so I think the only other board we have with five members is the Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee. The reason they only have five members is because they're so much smaller in population than the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee, which has seven members. So I'd like you to sort of keep that in mind when you're thinking about how many members should be on this commission, okay? The, so the, and, and another comment there, I heard the term open democracy, well, again, you need to consider that this commission is representing the entire population, and we're hoping to get a representative of the entire population, so people are represented, okay? The Citizens Academy, I don't know if you were suggesting that that be a requirement, but I'd also like you to consider that that will put further restraints on finding applicants, and Citizens Academy may only be offered one time per year in the future. So that would really hinder people from applying if they were forced to go through the academy first, because they may have to wait an entire year for it to be offered. So each board has their own bylaws, and there are some things that are common from one board to another, and that's, that was our goal here, was to make the bylaws more or less consistent with some items, but of course, your duties are going to be different, there are going to be some differences, but for the most part, procedurally, for meetings, public comment and that kind of thing, those, those types of items, we, our goal was to make them the same, consistent and fair. So please keep that in mind, too, when you're thinking about what, what the goal is with So please keep that in mind, too, when you're thinking about what, what the goal is with these. We were, quite frankly, we were anticipating this level of discussion because it wasn't supposed to be, um, an in-depth substantive change to the bylaws. We were trying to bring them up to date and make them consistent. Maybe there are changes. I'm not saying you can't make any changes. I'm just saying that was our goal, was to make some of these things consistent. Okay? That's all I had to say. Okay? And thank you for the time that you're putting into reviewing the bylaws. It's appreciated, it really is.
Thank you.
Okay, what is the group's pleasure?
My feeling actually is, today is not the day to approve anything. Today is the day to have learned a little, and thank you for the comments. In perspective, actually, your comment about the Citizens Academy would be something we might encourage board members to do, but it is well taken and waiting, if you're eleven months down the road and there's, you might run out of anybody. So, uh, but we might be making, trying to make a little bit of a mountain out of a molehill, too. I think we've got to watch that. You know, you could dig awful deep into bylaws and everything else on any organization I've been a member of, and we need to be aware of that. And perhaps this isn't the time, this may be the time to think about it and decide well, how to approach everything in the future with regard to bylaws, if we see the need or necessity, or the council sees necessity, for substantive changes in how all of the groups work. But right now, I, I think we might be pushing the envelope a little too much.
I agree.
Thank you for those comments. As a point in fact, there's a place on the application form to indicate whether or not an applicant has attended the Citizens Academy. It's not a criteria, but there is a place on the application form for consideration. I would like then our motion, and we can follow it up with discussion, I would like then our motion that we table this discussion until the following planning commission meeting, which is November the twenty-eighth, and allow time for, um, all the planning commission members, as they desire, to provide input on any proposed changes to the bylaws to the city clerk.
Is there a second?
Yes. Um, would the proposed changes have to be voted on independently? In other words, if there's eleven proposed changes to the base document, is the thought process that we would vote on each one of those and treat them individually? Because that can become rather drawn out. The way I look at bylaws is, I look at bylaws like a constitution, you know? You have to update them, you don't have to, but it'd be nice if you could update them every now and then. But it's, it's not to be changed at will. That's what a policy is for. And if so, if you wanted to have a subset to the bylaws, call it the policy of the planning commission, where it's a lot more flexible and you only need the majority of the planning submission members to approve a policy change without having to go through a formal bylaw constitutional change. And that's how I look at, at, at this document. So the, the, the shorter or smaller it is, I believe, the better. Because if you get too detailed into your constitution, you'll never get it done.
Joe?
I agree, and unfortunately, in previous lifetimes, I've suffered through pages upon pages of bylaw, byline approval processes. But I still see that there's going to be some need for something like that to incorporate it into the base document and then approve the base document. That being said, I specifically did not get into making specific qualification recommendations like Citizens Academy, et cetera, et cetera, because I don't see that as part of the purview of this commission. I see that as the purview of the city clerk's office and the city council and the overall board and commission thing. There has been a good deal of discussion about qualification of members, but in ours, I would just leave it necessarily kind of vague, you know? Qualified member, this, it's up to the city to determine what a qualified member is, it's not our decision. And so, whereas it's desirable, it's not a requirement. Uh, and so when looking at changes, yeah, there's some things in here I change that may change to other things, but there's some that I wouldn't, I would not get to that degree of specificity because I don't believe it's within our purview and it should remain with the city council to make that kind of decision.
Well, first, one man's qualifications is another man's disqualification, okay? So nobody sat down and defined what, what do you mean by qualifications? What qualifications are you going to have a spec for individual members of different, no? So I, I believe that you're correct. I think we should keep it to the level of citizen interest and participation and knowledge to the extent that they can have knowledge. But once you get into qualifications, now you're doing a job interview and you're looking for a specific set of attributes from a person in order to sit on a board. That's not necessarily representative of the citizenry of the city. The second thing I'd like to say is that I would like to see the, a new version of the proposed bylaws, which set aside that part of the bylaws that you intend to standardize between the committees, such as ex parte communication, conflict of interest, whatever, those standard pieces that you want to put in each of the sets of bylaws to make it consistent, and then define that section of these bylaws that are specifically attributable to the planning commission. So that we can focus on those rather than those pieces that are going to be kind of consistent among all the other boards, for example. So, for example, the code enforcement board has, has really final authority with regard to those issues that come before it. So I'm sure there is a lot of potential conflict of interest or ex parte communication that could occur, which would not be appropriate. So what I'm saying is, I would like to see the part that you want to standardize among the boards, put that in one place, put the piece that applies to the planning commission in another place. We should focus on those, specific pieces that apply to us as the planning commission, and see what we have to say about those and not get embroiled in the wordsmithing of the rest of it.
Okay, I think we still have a motion that we probably should have dropped.
I'd like to make one more comment on that. And I kind of agree with Paul on that. Um, what we're talking about, when I'm looking at the, at least those proposed changes for consideration that have already been submitted, it, it's not a matter of going through the bylaws paragraph by paragraph by paragraph and agreeing or disagreeing what, as to its applicability. What, what I'm reading here, from what has been submitted, is, is on an exception basis. There are about eight or nine items. There's, there's a consistency with, with several of the, of the submittals on some of the items. So there are only maybe about seven or eight items that, again, on an exception basis, that apply to the bylaws and not, again, every paragraph, every stipulation, every part of the process. I think that would be extremely frustrating and unproductive.
I agree with Paul as well. I think at the next meeting, if we could have just that, what's open for debate or discussion and what's consistent among all the committees, that would give us an opportunity to see what, what exactly we are going to be commenting on, what's open for comment.
Okay. Now, to be redundant, we still have a motion to vote on whether we're going to continue this to the next meeting. It's been moved and seconded, correct?
Yes, but now I have an amendment. I would like to say that I second the amendment, uh, second the motion with the proviso that the staff provide us with the breakdown that I've asked for, and we could take it up at the next meeting.
Would you, would you speak at proposed amendment?
The proposed amendment is that the staff would provide us the breakdown of the bylaws into those sections I asked for, which is separate the standard part from the planning commission part, and that we take this up on the date you preferred, which was the next meeting.
I'll second that.
So second the amendment. You have to second the amendment and then we can...
Well, do we have to, do we have to vote on the first one and then?
I, I would have to agree to accepting amendment as the, as I made the initial motion, parliamentary procedure wise.
Excuse me, parliamentary procedure. Um, is it, is it, is that, for discussion purposes on the proposed amendment to the motion, is that something that would be reasonable for the city staff or the city clerk's office to do?
That would be very simple, other than a section about qualifications and the creation... I'm sorry, can you hear me better now? All right. So that'd be very simple to do because most of it is the same as every other board, with the exception of the area about the duties of the commission and the qualifications of members. So I could get that together very easily.
Joe?
Okay. Um, administratively speaking, um, I think this will delay the process, and I think we'll lose about two weeks, because it's going to take the staff time to come back after this meeting, prepare minutes, get everything out. By the time we see what Paul's asking for, we're going to be a week from our next meeting. It's also going to be Thanksgiving week, people probably still going to be busy again, we'll find another round of excuses. I think we ought to keep it as, as Harvey proposed, as, you know, let's not change what we're looking at again and not have to wait for the staff to have to produce yet another document for us to then have a limited amount of time to review before our next meeting. I think it's, it's general enough that we have an open proposal to amend and reconsider at the twenty-eighth November meeting.
A question for the staff, how long would it take to break it apart the way we've discussed?
It would take less than a day.
Okay, so basically, they can put that package together in a day, Joe.
It's not much.
But basis, based on the discussion and the feedback from, from the clerk, city clerk's officer, I would agree to amend my motion to include Paul's recommendation.
Okay, so I, do I need another second for that? No, you're seconding. Whoever started the motion, I thought it was Sherman.
There would need to be a second to Paul's motion.
We had a second from...
I second, I second. I second, this is Brad Gamblin, I second Paul's motion.
So there's a vote, so you need to call for a vote on the amendment? And then to call for a vote on the...
I'm so glad I moved on. Okay, can I, all right, can I vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries unanimously, this will be on the agenda for the November...
That was, that was the vote for the amendment. Now we need a vote on the, on the original...
I'd like to make motion that we...
We've already called.
All right, yeah, you just called.
All right, can I vote on the original?
Yes. It's amended, yeah.
Yes, to move it forward to the November twenty-eighth meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries unanimously. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Good.
Huh? What? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on into the quasi-judicial public hearing next, so that we don't hold up our audience much longer. So this is, and we've already sworn anyone who thinks they're going to speak in, so this is quasi-judicial SRC 03/2021A, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, approving the final plat to subdivide a parcel of land containing fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty plus or minus square feet into three single-family residential lots, excuse me, in order to create a subdivision to be called 805 West Marion Subdivision for the property at 805 West Marion Avenue, replat of F. Quidnow Subdivision of Block Twenty-Six, City of Pontagorda, Florida, and plat book four, page fifty-six, as recorded in the public records of Charlotte County, Florida, and being more particularly described on exhibit A attached to this resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the plat, authorizing the city clerk to forward this resolution and the original final plat to the clerk of the circuit court for recording at the applicant's expense and providing an effective date.
Good afternoon, Lisa Han, zoning official, and I have been sworn, I'd like to enter our staff report into the record in its entirety by reference. As stated, this is a subdivision request for 805 West Marion Avenue. The request is to subdivide parcel into three single-family lots. A ten-foot utility easement has been included. This is considered a minor subdivision. The property is owned neighborhood residential ten units per acre. This would permit a single-family residence on each lot, a single-family residence with an accessory dwelling unit or duplex structure on each lot. The minimum lot area is more than the thirty-five-hundred square feet that is required by the neighborhood residential zoning classification. It is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, future land use policies one point one, point one, one point one, and one point one, point one, five point one, objective one point one, five. Public schools, facilities, policies eight point one, point two, point three, and eight point one, point two, point six, and intergovernmental coordination, objective nine point one, point one. The request does not create any nonconformities. It is served by public streets, West Marion Avenue and Berry Street. Public Works has made a comment that the drainage will be reviewed and approved at the time of lot construction. Utility availability, a ten-foot utility easement was provided, and installation of utilities will be at the owner's expense. Conditions of approval, staff recommends approval with the conditions based on utility department installation of the utilities at property owner's expense, and that drainage will be reviewed and approved at time of lot construction. Any questions? Questions for staff? Okay. The applicant is here, if you would like to hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Jerry Waxler, I'm a land use attorney with the McCrory Law Firm. I'm representing William H. Quidno, Danetta H. Quidno Barrow, Michael T. Quidno, and Margaret F. Seton, who are the owners of 805 West Marion Avenue. They are requesting final plat approval for a three-lot subdivision. Each lot in the subdivision is approximately fifty by one hundred, some are ninety, some are, you know, forty-nine point something, some are a little less than one hundred, some are a little more, but they are approximately fifty by one hundred. The lot sizes and dimensions comply with the NR-10 zoning. In fact, as Lisa indicated, the lot sizes are actually larger than what is allowed by the minimum of lot size requirements of the neighborhood residential ten zoning district. Plating is a ministerial act. The purpose of this quasi-judicial hearing is to determine whether the proposed lots are consistent with your comp plan and conform to the requirements of your land development regulations. You have just heard testimony from the staff that they, in fact, do meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan or consistent with the comp plan and do meet the requirements of the neighborhood residential ten zoning district. There is no impact on zoning by approval of a subdivision. The same uses that are allowed at the lot, on the large lot, would be allowed on each of the small lots, but each individual lot has to meet the setbacks from the newly established side lot lines, which may impact what could be developed. The property owners are the heirs of an estate. They are not developers, they have no development plans. I am not able to tell you today what they will do with the lots, other than that they intend to sell the lots. So there will be subsequent owners of those lots, and the subsequent owners will determine what they wish to place on the lot, as long as what they wish to place meets all the requirements of the neighborhood residential ten zoning district. Plating creates no variances, it does not change the requirements, it simply takes one larger-than-normal lot and divides it into three lots consistent with the neighborhood residential ten zoning district. Based on that, we would request approval, or at least a recommendation of approval from this board for the final plat for this subdivision. from this board, for the final plat for this subdivision. I have available for any questions.
Okay, so Jerry, obviously because you're extremely experienced in this area, and I have a hard time envisioning sizes and what that means you can do with the property, what would you expect the parking situation to be?
Well, I would expect that they would have to have some sort of a driveway. These are, they have a depth of 100 feet, you have room to be able to put a home. Quite frankly, these 5,000 square foot lots are what we're typically seeing in subdivisions like Waterford Estates, subdivision, the subdivision that's going up on Jones Loop. Most of the large, this is not going to be developed with three lots by one of the large national home developers, but there are, typically what you see on this size lot would be a single-family home. But you do have the ability to go flat, you could put a duplex structure, does a duplex have to be single-story, can a duplex be... So they could have a flat over flat, two units, flat over flat, that would be something someone could choose to do if they wanted to. There are requirements, though, that you provide parking on the property for those lots, so you would have to have a drive, you might have to have built into the structure a garage. Again, whatever would be developed on this lot would have to be consistent with the dictates of your code, and that doesn't change by splitting it from one lot into three lots.
Okay, but again, especially if you have duplexes, that impacts parking. And obviously, it's an issue in the historic district, and we've had lots of issues over the years with people building property with no parking. So I'm just going to say for the record that whoever buys this should think about parking on property.
I would agree, particularly because unlike some of the lots where that is a code, which have been on kind of the side streets, this fronts on a major...
Well, Marion and Berry, I mean, there is no...
Major roads, so it would be very difficult if someone wasn't parking on the lots. But plating has no effect on whether or not there will or won't be parking.
No, I understand, but I wanted to state it for the record, just so it's there going forward, okay? Any other questions for Jerry?
Well, Jerry, it bothers me that it looks like there were, I don't know what there is on the lot now, on those lots, three very mature, looks like very nice trees that are going to have to come down if those lots are developed, I would expect. Do we know what the condition of those trees are? They may be mute now, they may be...
I have no idea, but...
I mean, it may have been taken care of by Ian already, but it does, you know, I hate to see big trees come down.
And I have a lot with mature oak trees, and I love mature trees on a property, but again, unless you have a code that dictates what they can and cannot do, plating is simply ministerial. If the size of the lots complies with the minimum, is at or above the minimum lot size, if it has, if it contains, if the plat itself contains all the requirements required by the Florida statute, which has been now reviewed multiple times by your, by its contracted county surveyor, and agrees that it does, it's one of the few zoning processes that has almost no discretion involved in it. It is, and the problem is Florida Supreme Court has held over and over again, it is simply a ministerial act, you are simply checking boxes. Here we have three lots, the minimum lot size is 3,500 square feet. Are the three lots 3,500 square feet or greater? Yes, they are. You have to have a certain amount of minimum frontage, I believe it's 50 feet, or do they have at least 50 foot of frontage on the lots? Yes, they do. If you check the boxes and it meets all the boxes, in other words, the lots meet these requirements of your code, there really isn't discretion about whether or not to approve. Now, when someone comes in, if you have codes that address how you treat mature trees, they will have to follow those codes. If they do not, it is not a basis to say, "Sorry, you can't have this, because now these three lots, they're going to, we're going to have to take down a tree," unless there is a code that addresses whether or not you can take down a tree. But even that has nothing to do with plating, but would have to do with whoever was looking to develop the lot ultimately.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Jerry? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to speak on this topic, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and that you've been sworn, you have three minutes. All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this topic, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and that you have been sworn, you have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, I'm Anthony Scott. Excuse me. I've been sworn in.
Your name is, sir?
Anthony Scott.
All right, thank you.
With Brit, my company that owns the lot next door is called Brit Properties. So I'm interested maybe to talk to the lady afterwards about my, I have a house, obviously I'm interested in what's going to be developed, but it sounds like that's unknown until whoever purchases the new lots. My house was kind of damaged by the hurricane, so I might be interested in trying to do something similar on our lot. But that would be for another day, I'm sure. Okay, that's what I had to say. I'm going to, I'll talk to Jerry afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this topic, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and that you have been sworn, you have three minutes. Last call, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this topic, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, discussion?
Is there any, would it be appropriate question, I, city staff? Would be appropriate, it's not a condition of approval, but would it be appropriate to include a recommendation that carries with it a request, or not even a request, that the proposed developer or developers of those properties take into serious consideration parking?
They would have to meet the code as it's written and adopted at the time of construction. So as of now, you are required two parking spaces per dwelling unit be on site. That's the code as written and adopted now. So they're going to have to meet the code when they come in for development, they have to meet the code. We have our development standards, so they're going to, they will have to meet those. It's, that, it shouldn't be a condition of approval, because it's in the code now, they have to meet the development standards.
Okay, so if it's a duplex, though?
That would be four parking spaces, they would have to provide four.
Wouldn't it be just dump your cars on the street?
Pardon me?
It wouldn't be put your cars on the street?
No, ma'am, it would not. It would be on-site, there is a provision in the code that allows them to come in for a waiver, however, with the location of this, I don't see how a waiver would be approved for something like that, like it would be on a further offside street or something wide enough that they could create on-street parking for themselves. It would be difficult to do at this location.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, then we need a motion.
And based on the evidence and testimony presented at this public hearing for item number SRC 03-2021, I find that this request is consistent with the City of Pontagorda comprehensive plan, and move that we recommend to the City Council approval of this request.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
All right, Harvey seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. We're going to go back to the legislative public hearing. And Lisa, are you taking us through this one?
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Principal of Planner Urban Design. So Florida statute requires that local municipalities have a comprehensive plan, and that that comprehensive plan be reviewed regularly to ensure consistency with Florida statutes as they change, and also to ensure that those plans encapsulate fully the community's vision for how it wants to see itself develop over time. The City of Pontagorda is due for what's called an evaluation and appraisal report process. At this time, that letter is due at the end of this month. So earlier, we got our timelines a little backwards, so this agenda item should have come to Planning Commission last, at their last meeting, however, due to our administrative oversight, it is on this meeting. So City Council has already heard this item, resolution to forward the required notification letter to the Department of, Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. So generally speaking, this letter outlines for the department what changes the city anticipates upon making to its comprehensive plan, and the date of receipt of that letter by the Department of Economic Opportunity starts the clock ticking, and we have one full calendar year to adopt those proposed changes. If we fail to adopt any proposed changes, or if we were to fail to submit this letter, we could be found in noncompliance with the Florida comprehensive plan, and that could impact grant applications and would prohibit the municipality from undertaking certain revisions to its comprehensive plan, i.e. map amendments, so comprehensive plan changes, or annexations in the case of municipality like ourselves. So the actual contents of the letter are based upon the community input and feedback we've received relative to the citywide master plan and its previous sister processes in terms of modifications to future land use, housing, transportation, and, future land use, housing, transportation, coastal management, and the historic element, and then minor modifications to those other elements. There are 13 total elements in the comprehensive plan.
So do we need to do anything since it's already been done?
Um...
Do we need to vote to refer to the City Council who's already approved it?
For, for, for the purposes of dotting all the ayes and crossing all the administrative t's, it would be best, and staff would firmly appreciate it, if the board were to make a motion to recommend approval to City Council. And again, I apologize for the...
Questions don't really, they are not really relevant at this stage.
If the, if the board does have questions, though, it would be nice to know what those are, so that we can ensure that as we move forward with actual draft changes, that we're fully capturing this process. This board, the Planning Commission, is the local planning agency for the city, which is required under Florida statute. It is your job and sole authority to advise the city on whether or not proposed land use changes, or land use matters are consistent with comprehensive plan. It is, it is your authority.
So questions for staff?
Better late than never. That's my comment. Better late than never.
We need a motion?
So moved.
No, no. Make a motion that we forward the proposed letter to the City Council with our recommendation for approval.
Is there a second? Somebody seconded over to Sherman?
Second.
Okay. All right, I need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ayes carry, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. The last item, Leah. A bittersweet moment for me, I thoroughly enjoyed my involvement with the Planning Commission, especially that meeting in September was really good, and I move on to more good times, I'm sure. But anyway, at this moment, we really need to elect a new chair to fulfill my term of office, and then you will elect again in February with all of the other commissions at the annual time. So Leah, you can...
Yes, I'll open the floor for nomination of chair.
I nominate Joe Como, who's currently the vice chair.
Okay. Is there any other nominations?
Yes, I'll nominate Harvey Ober. Vice Chair.
I believe he served the three times already.
How many terms is the chair?
He served three. You serve three terms already, and that's the max for, so that's...
Yeah, but I, however, we can go over that at another time. I respect the decline of the nomination, and second the motion from Joe Como.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I need all. Is there a second?
Since there are no other nominations, and Mr. Hamar is appointed chair.
Okay.
By acclamation, yes.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we will have to do vice chair probably next month, then, just since we're vice chair.
Okay. Okay, we're at the point now, congratulations, Joe. Any staff comments before we conclude the meeting? Any additional member comments?
Yes. Hi, thank you. First, I'd like to, again, thank Donna for everything she's contributed to the Planning Commission over the years, and for her leadership, and look for her support of the Planning Commission when she was on the City Council. Secondly, we received the resolution from the City Council regarding quasi-judicial public hearing procedures and rules for ex parte communications. What we received did not have a resolution number on it, however, I found out that there is a specific number for that resolution, if you want to make note of it. It's Resolution Number 3673-2022.
Would you repeat that again?
It's Resolution 3673-2022, which was adopted the 21st of September 2022. As a matter of comment, I was, I had questioned the understanding of, I don't know if any of y'all have it, but it's Section 114, Paragraph 5, on the second line, well, it says pursuant to the provisions of Section 286.0115, Part N1, Part NC, Florida statutes, in quasi-judicial proceedings on land use matters conducted pursuant to Chapter 26 Pontagorda Code, no person shall be precluded from communicating directly with a member of the decision-making body, and on and on. I was, I just wanted to make certain that there was a clear understanding on our part of what that specification meant, quasi-judicial proceedings on land use matters. And from what I'm, I had a question into, to the legal office in, in the cell of city staff, I haven't heard back, but from what I'm gathering from comments from city staff, is that most everything we come in contact with is a land use matter. So that paragraph is particularly relevant to everything that, most everything, if you will, that comes in front of the Planning Commission.
Yes, and just from the discussions at City Council, listening to the city attorney explain it, he very specifically broke it out, just as you indicated, where previously the statute had not shown that, exception for land use matters, the attorney found where there had been a subsequent court decision that included land use matters and specifically addressed that, and it came up over the, because it was getting to be almost ridiculous what was being considered ex parte communications. You know, if you run into somebody at the gym and they says, "Hey, what do you think of Fisherman's Village?", now you've got an ex parte communication. You know, it just, it was getting to the point of ludicrousness, and so, you know, this state, this statute does allow you to have any number of conversations on land use matters without having the requirement to disclose each and every one of them individually. to disclose each and every one of them individually.
And that's the key, thank you. That's the key wording in that last line. That says, "Communication by a member of the decision-making body is not required, and such nondisclosure shall not be presumed prejudicial to the decision of the decision-making body." Speak into the microphone, please.
That was sent out by city council? I'm not sure that I have that. When was that sent out by city council?
It was signed by the, by the mayor on the 21st of September 2022.
And that was something we received?
And then we received, it was emailed to us, to all members of the planning commission.
Yeah, in fact, I recall receiving it and asking if the clerk was planning to go through it at a meeting, and I never got a response, you know, to explain it, like the clerk or the city attorney, so, because I remember the email.
Yeah.
And however, what, what, what we got in email did not have the resolution number on it.
Can you repeat the resolution?
I asked the city clerk to provide that, and she did.
Yeah, because, because I know we had it at least for last month, because I made a copy of it, put it in plastic, and stuck it in the back of my binder just for this meeting to make sure I had the exact resolution with me for the meeting, just in case. Check your email.
Yeah, it was emailed. It was emailed.
Check your spam folder.
Yeah.
It's from the city. It's in your spam folder.
I remember getting it from Karen because I remember having trouble.
It's Karen's last email.
And I was surprised it wasn't a discussion item.
So I'll make a copy for everybody, laminate it, three-hole punch it, and it can go in your approval criteria binder that we have provided for everybody. So that is for you guys to take home. That's yours to keep. If you will notice that, like, there's spaces in between some of the criteria, so you can take notes. There's dry erase markers in there, so you can use them, wipe them off, and use them again, so.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, any other member comments? Okay. All right, you see none? I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Good luck, Godspeed.
Thank you, Donna.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.